Well, welcome back, everybody. You know, we're gonna do the roll. In case for some time I can't be here, I have my little Billy Linahan President here to keep an eye, to keep an eye on all of you. Check out the back. The Clerk will please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum.
Hi, Clerk. Counselor Baker.
Yeah.
Sosioomo. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lenihan.
Here.
Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Murphy. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu. Counselor Yancy. And Counselor Zachem. Mr. President, we have...
I've been informed by the Clerk that a quorum is, is present at this time. I would ask for all councilors and guests to please rise, and I will ask Counsel Yancy to come to the podium to introduce today's clergy. I'd like to remind, after the invocation is delivered, I would ask all members and guests to remain standing as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Counsel Yancy?
You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to wish you and all of our colleagues and guests a Happy New Year. This is the very first council meeting of the year, and we're not going according to tradition. Normally, we'll be electing a president, but we're gonna forego that this year, I believe. So, at this time, I would like to introduce my minister, the Reverend Dr. Arthur Gerald, Jr., who was born in the great city of Boston. In the late 50s, they actually called him Turk when he was working with Reverend Michael Haines, I'm sorry, Reverend. He graduated from Boston English High School, attended Lincoln University in Pennsylvania, and Berkshire Christian College in Lenox, Massachusetts. Reverend Gerald was ordained as a minister of the Gospel of Jesus Christ in 1976, and he also participated in graduate program at the Gordon Cromwell Theological Seminary. He recently retired from the Salem State College, where he served as dean of student. He's married to the beautiful Henrietta Williams of Mattapan, and they have two great children, Arthur Michael Gerald, a graduate of Salem State College, and Alana Michelle Gerald, who was a pre-med graduate of Spelman College in Atlanta, Georgia. Reverend Gerald currently serves as president of the Black Ministerial Alliance. He spent a tremendous amount of time touring the continent of Africa as part of the American Baptist Mission, and, most importantly, on June 27, 2010, he became the 13th pastor of the historic 12th Baptist Church. So it's now my honor and privilege to present to you, once again, my esteemed minister and friend, Reverend Arthur Gerald, Jr.
He just indulges me just for a moment to send greetings to the President, to the hand, to all the council members, and to my strongest member of 12th Baptist Church, my good friend for many years, Charles Yancy. Charles Yancy is the, is a member of the Boston Home Church of Dr. Mount King, Jr., and you should have, if you haven't been given an invitation for this Sunday, when we have the Mount King Convocation. Our speaker this year is Senator Elizabeth Warren, and you are more than welcome to attend. Now let us bow for prayer. Eternal God and Heavenly Father, we are thankful for this day that you have made, and we shall rejoice and be glad in it. We thank you for this opening session of this historic group of the Boston City Council. Lord, we pray that you have been our help in ages past, our hope for the years to come, our shelter from the stormy blast, and our eternal home. As we come before you today, we're concerned about issues around us, even in the world. Our hearts and our prayers go out to those people in France, where 12 individuals lost their lives today because of terrorist activity. And Lord, I just want to say thank you for the city of Boston, that who, through these times of unrest across the nation, that Boston has done things decently and in order, and that's largely due to the leadership of the city and the work many have done to have this to be more of a city for all the people. As this council that has been elected by the people and for the people, may they uphold their positions of responsibility, honor distinction with commitment and dedication. May this council govern themselves, and may they do so in a manner and in a way that will lead us to a greater city, not made of hands, but eternal in the heaven. Lord, I pray that, that you will give them wisdom as they govern. Lord, I pray that you will give this council a greater sense of the welfare and true needs of the people of Boston. And Lord, I pray that you will give this council a greater thirst for liberty and justice for all. And Lord, I pray that this council will be endowed with the ability to work together in harmony, so that the people of Boston will be the benefactors of their good works, their good deeds, and their good efforts. And now I pray that you will bless the proceedings of the council and the business that they will take care of on this day, that they honor you in all that they do and all that they say, because thine is the kingdom, thine is the power, and thine is the glory forever and ever, world without end. I pray. Amen. Say amen again, council.
Amen.
God bless you all.
Thank you, Reverend Gerald, for your inspiring and pertinent message. At this time, Counsel Yancy will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States public, or which it stands, under God, justice for all.
Thank you, Counsel Yancy. Thank you, Reverend Gerald. Good to see you again.
God bless you.
We had a presentation planned for today. Many of you probably have received the memo. We were gonna recognize Bill Brett, who, who joined the Boston Globe in 1965, and this would have been the 50, he's celebrating the 50th year of publication in the Boston Globe. Unfortunately, he's, he's contracted shingles, and therefore, he will, he will not be with us today. You know, we know that that can be an extremely painful and debilitating condition, so we wish him well, and we will hold off for that presentation till he's well and, and do it with him at, at that appropriate time. So, thank you. Happy New Year to all of you. Welcome back. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of last week's meeting will stand approved. Seeing, hearing no objections, the minutes are so approved. Communications from his honor, the mayor.
Docket number 0118, message and order authorizing mayor's office of new urban mechanics to accept and expend a grant not to exceed $1,350,000 from the Bloomberg philanthropies, I'm sorry, to support the creation of Boston's first innovation delivery team over a period of three years.
Docket 0118 will be assigned to the Committee on Economic Development, Planning, and Labor.
Docket number 0119, message and order authorizing the police department to accept and expand a donation of $7,500 from the Highland Street Foundation for the youth, by the Youth Violence Strike Force, to fund opportunities for the city of Boston's youth, including attendance at summer camps through Youth Connect, Boston Boys and Girls Club.
Counselor Murphy?
I'd like to move suspension of rules and passage of docket 119.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, move suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0119. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0119 has passed.
Docket number 0120, message and order authorizing the mayor's office to accept a donation of a podium from the Iron Workers Local 7, New England Regional Council of Carpenter's, the New England Carpenter's Training Center, and Youth Build Boston.
Counsel Sosioomo, move suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0120. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0120 has passed. Reports of public officers and others?
To look through and read.
Yeah, please read docket 0121 through docket 0131.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket 0121, communication was received from the Boston Retirement Board regarding certification and transmittal to the City Council of Boston Retirement Board Budget, calendar year 2015 operating budget. Docket number 0122, communication was received from the city clerk by the filing of the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the Fourth Amendment Agreement between the city of Boston and St. Patrol Paris Apartments pursuant to Chapter 121A, Section 6A of the Massachusetts General Law. Docket number 0123, communication was received from the city clerk of the filing by the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the agreement between the city of Boston and 1,000 Washington, Inc., Carradine pursuant to Chapter 121A, Project Certificate of Project Termination, Section 6A of the Massachusetts General Law. Docket number 0124, communication was received from Keegan Wherland LLP regarding petition of N-Star Electric Company pursuant to Section 6 of Chapter 665 of the Acts of 1956 for the exemption from the Boston zoning docket and approval pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 164, Section 72. Docket number 0125, notice was received from the mayor of the resignation of Geraldine Kadyer as the Board of Elections Commissioner. Docket number 0126, notice was received from the mayor of the resignation of Claudio Martinez as a member of the Boston School Committee. Docket number 0127, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Kevin Coyne as the interim purchasing agent, December 15, 2014. Docket number 0128, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Judith C. Watkins as a member of the Archives and Records Advisory Board, her term expiring January 1, 2018. Docket number 0129, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Michael Dennehy as interim commissioner of Public Works, effective December 30, 2014. Docket number 0130, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Jerry Robinson as a member of the Boston School Committee, her term expiring January 7, 2019. And docket number 0131, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Regina Robinson as a member of the Boston School Committee, her term expiring January 7, 2019.
Madam Clerk, could you place docket 0121 in the Committee on Post Audit and 122 through 0131 to be having placed on file? Did you get that? Yeah. Yes, sure. Recession. Hold on. Madam Clerk, if, if on docket 0121 through 0131, they will be placed on file. And now we'll have a quick recess. Motion's on and resolution.
Docket number 0132, Counsel Lenihan offered the following ordinance, amending the city of Boston code ordinance, Chapter 2-8.3, salary of...
Chair recognizes Counselor Bill Lenihan.
This particular matter is not about the salaries of, of the city council. This is about allocation for staff and personnel for each council office, so that it's clear. Okay? And, and basically, what I'm offering here is a $10,000 increase to staff allocations for each office of all 13 offices, all 12 offices, and 15 for the president's office. And that would be for an increase, to increase it up to $216,000 for each individual office. Okay? Is, is everybody clear on that? Right. And so there, there's, there's been additional money in, in five or six of our last budgets, how much that we've returned significant amount of dollars. It seems like this is an appropriate time for you to have an opportunity to give your individual staff an increase. You average four to five staff, $10,000 doesn't go far in that regard. It's an annual. Moving forward, we'd probably retain that same price going into the 2016 FYI budget. So, it, and then it would be a $15,000 increase for the president's office. So, it, it's my intention that an opportunity, I would like to suspend and pass this matter today. To do that, I need your approval to do that. I could send it to, to, to a hearing, because it, it is an ordinance, and that's why it says salaries on it. It's part of that chapter which, within our ordinance, so we'd be approving an ordinance for the increase of allotment to each city council office, not to the city councilor. So, it's my motion to suspend and pass, and you're welcome to debate. Huh? You want to recess?
Rescess, quick recess.
Oh, sure.
Session. If there is no objection, docket 0132 is before the council. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Wu. Sorry, your light didn't light up, and just want to apologize.
Ask the sponsor. We're all very familiar with the budget and, you know, the council budget, but if we could just better understand for the exact amounts, why 10,000 was chosen and 15, just so we can have an understanding of that as we consider this.
Recognize Counsel Lenihan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the floor. Um, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a good question. It's a, there has been a significant surplus in personnel allotments for each of the budget years, and it seemed like an appropriate time to do this. $10,000 is, you know, if you have five people, you know, you break that down, it's, it's a minor increase. If you wanted to add staff and retain the same price, each one of you deals differently with your budget for $206,000. How that applies to your specific office, I just think this is an appropriate time for us to, to address this matter and to vote on whether we should increase allocations for the office.
Counsel Zachem.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I certainly support of this. I know my staff and I know everyone else's staff here work very hard and certainly deserves more. I also, though, think Chair Counsel Wu's questions on, on the amount and if they're, what the surpluses have been in the past and what this would take out of it, if I could also ask through the chair, to the sponsor, what that would be, but certainly, I think our, our staff deserve, deserve to be paid more. Thank you.
Counsel Lenihan.
Our budget has been, has averaged over $150,000 in surplus over the past five, six, seven years. I'm not specific. One year, it was as much as $300,000, and for a variety of reasons, and this would be three years without the increase of allotment, so I think that it was an appropriate time. This would cost the council 100, it would be $135,000, but it's of personnel that the allotment is in place already. Okay?
Counsel Yancy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to point out, based on my review of the fiscal year '14 budget, we returned well over $200,000 in the last fiscal year. We haven't received all the information for the current fiscal year, but the president is correct. It was quite a bit left on the table, and I also agree with the previous speaker that compared to salaries throughout city government, a city council staff is some of the lowest paid in city government today. And as I pointed out previously, on a different subject, but in the same context, the city, there are more than 4,400 city employees, and much more than city councilors as well. But I think it's important that we, we note that it's well over 200,000 in previous year, and you can probably justify even increasing the 10,000 to even 15,000 per office. It still be within, but we've traditionally returned to the general fund.
Thank you, Counsel Yancy. Docket, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Lenihan.
Allocation, where this is at the half-year, I thought that this was the appropriate amount. I think that if we would like to revisit in our allocations going forth in 2016 for a further increase, that we could do that. It would be best that we have the budget projections moving forward, but I think at this time, since the money's already been allocated, it's just a reallocation to where that personnel money would be spent, then this is the appropriate time to do that amount. And ask for your support.
Thank you. Docket 0132 is before the council for suspension and pass. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0133.
Docket 0133, Counsel Presley offered the following order for hearing to identify solutions to ensure equitable transitions of Boston public school students receiving special education services.
I didn't see whose button was pushed first. Counsel Yancy will defer to Counsel Presley.
... audit, we were not able to schedule a hearing before the close of the year. Over 20% of our Boston public school students have learning, developmental, and physical disabilities or mental health diagnosis that require federally mandated special education services. 4,500 are between 14, 14 and 22 years old. They're what we call transition phase. It's the age where students and families need to begin planning for how to successfully transition out of high school. For youth receiving special education services, there are unique considerations and often extra planning required to develop and prepare the optimal transition, whether it be further education, vocational skills, independent living, or employment. I look forward to working with the Chair of Education for an expedited hearing in advance of the FY16 budget season, and I hope all of you will participate. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Counsel Yancy.
Mr. President, I withdraw my request to speak.
Counsel O'Malley.
My name, please.
Oh, please add Counselor O'Malley's name to that, and Counselor Jackson's name. Counselor Wu, Counsel Yancy. Counselor Baker and Counselor Siomo. Little late guys. Counselor Lamartina, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Murphy. Please add the chair's name. I'll be the latest of all. That matter will go, be assigned to the Committee on Education. Madam Clerk, 0134.
Docket number 0134, Counsel Presley offered the following order for hearing to develop a community planning process in BRA to ensure investments in affordable housing and job funds through BRA development agreement.
Counsel Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This hearing is also a refile from last year, which developed out of a two-year Boston Residents' Jobs Policy Working Group that myself and Counsel Ross convened, which many of you participated in. It was a diverse coalition of 60-plus advocates. Again, they met for over a period of two years, and this hearing order is in direct response to feedback from residents and community organizations throughout our city. My particular focus with this hearing order is to develop, one, a community planning process in the BRA, and, two, to push for a minimum standard community benefits agreement with clear accountability mechanisms ensuring these benefits, as well as commitments to linkage funds, Affordable Housing Trust, and jobs fund payments that are tracked and honored in a timely manner. While I recognize that each neighborhood should be planned and developed with a customized approach, surely there are some baseline standards that we all can agree to that are fundamental to a thriving neighborhood. I've been working on this offline for a matter of months, and developers that I've spoken to who've been a part of these meetings would also appreciate some baseline level of predictability. I think this is a conversation worth having and an idea worth pursuing. I look forward to partnering with Mayor Walsh, the BRA, residents, developers, and this body to ensure that urban planning and economic development in Boston occurs in a way that is transparent and continues to serve the best interest of the residents of this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Counsel Zecham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank Counsel Presley for bringing this very important issue to the forefront of the council. I look forward to working with her, the BRA, and the administration on this, as, you know, this is probably at least half, if not more, of what my office deals with on a daily basis, is development issues and the community benefits agreement that go along with that. I think it's so important to make sure that those benefits actually get to the communities that are intended to be benefited, especially those that are impacted most by some of the very large developments happening across the city. I think we're all happy to see cranes, development, jobs, and economic development in the city, but we need to make sure that that also helps everyone in the existing neighborhoods, the residents who have built our neighborhoods and have made them so desirable to developers and to other people. So that's my name be added, and I applaud Counsel Presley for this order. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Zecham. Please add Counsel Zecham's name, and please add my name. Please add Counsel Baker, Siomo, Flaherty, Counsel Lamartina's, McCarthy's, O'Malley's, Counsel Wu's, Counsel Yancy's. Counsel Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to applaud the efforts of Counsel Presley in this regard. As many of you know, I've actually been looking at the community benefits of colleges and universities in the city of Boston. I think it's very important that we actually do take an assessment of all development that's occurring in the city of Boston, and some neighborhoods have been able to do better than other neighborhoods relative to what they've been able to negotiate. Having a baseline platform, I think, would actually be something that's good and very helpful for every neighborhood in the city of Boston. I also think from a business perspective, it will provide some more predictability for the people who are going to be building in the city. So I think it's timely, and it's something that we should definitely move forward, especially in light of all of the building that's occurring in the city of Boston. Thank you so much for your work, Counsel Presley, and please add my name.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Add Counsel Jackson's name. Docket 0134 will be assigned to the Committee on Housing. Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0135, Counsel Linehan and Flaherty offered the following order, creating a residency policy commission.
Counsel Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Obviously, I think I speak for everybody when you say that it's a very complicated and controversial issue that dates back to the mid-'70s, so it's close to 40 years old. I describe the residency policy as a mess, means different things to different people. Some people are beholden to it, others are exempt from it, and oftentimes, it's either in direct conflict with state law or case law. So the time has come in 2015 to revisit and to look and to reexamine, and I think to put a residency policy forward that fits the 2015 model for city government and restore fairness and restore equity and make sure that it pertains to the rank-and-file employee as much as it does to that superior or to that department head. So that said, my hope is that a residency policy commission will be created by his honor, the mayor, including seven members, and hopefully that they'll consult with the council to see whether or not we want to have a recommended or a member of the council serve. But the time has come to address the inequities and the unfairness around the implementation of residency as well as the enforcement. And I think we all have stories of how we've seen some of the selective political enforcement, and we've also seen where it's been completely ignored. So it should never be about who you know, or who you hire, whose sign you hold, or who you contribute to, or who you campaign for, and then we're going to enforce residency or not. So hopefully, we'll get a fresh perspective on it, fresh look at it, and get the residency policy on the books that this body can support and that the residents of the city can be proud of. Thank you, Mr. President. And at the appropriate time after colleagues have an opportunity weigh in, I'd be asking that we move for suspension and passage. Let's get this over to the mayor's office. Let him, as our mayor, put together a residency policy commission sooner rather than later so we can fix what's wrong and what's unfair about residency as it currently stands and how it's currently enforced. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Yancy.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I commend you and Counsel Flaherty for putting this item on the floor. You have one basic concern, and that is, if we're going to go ahead and form this commission, we should have it structured so a member of this body will serve on it. I don't think that should be left up to the whim of the administration. I think that the partnership we have with the administration is very positive, but this issue involves both the executive branch and the legislative branch of government in terms of policy. So that's my first comment. My second comment has to do with the actual flow of dollars in city government. As all of you know, we spend more than $1.1 billion on salary alone, not including overtime or benefits. $1.1 billion every year. Third of those dollars go to individuals who don't live in the city of Boston. That translates into well over $400 million a year going to people who don't live in the city of Boston. It's not questioning the work or the dedication to the city, but just looking at the fact that Boston is a thriving city, most of the higher-paid positions in both the public and the private sector do not go to people who live in the city of Boston, particularly in the private sector. So I think it is important that we take a look at this issue from economic viewpoint as well. I think it's important that if you want to work for the city of Boston, you at least be required to pay part of the property taxes here in the city. But there are other benefits, even more substantial, of having Boston resident as a city employee. So I commend the both of you, and just wanted to note that we're talking about a substantial amount of money with implications in each of our neighborhoods, as well as implications with regards to economic development in Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Yancy. Counsel Jackson.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I rise to thank you and Counsel Flaherty for this important and timely conversation. I am a proponent of the city of Boston, and people who live in the city of Boston are having an opportunity to have the benefit and preference, honestly, to working in the city of Boston. What we can't have is the people who make the most money and who have the most ability to pay the difficult rents that are in the city of Boston, not have to follow by the same rules as the people at Public Works who make $38,000, $39,000, $40,000 a year. It's a very important conversation, and we're all over the place when it comes to the different bargaining unit. I think it's timely and really important. And I would just note, I got to go to Philadelphia at the beginning of December, and interestingly, there, they spend, there's a 5% tax on each employee regardless of where you are, and that would deal with some of the things that Counsel Yancy is speaking about. We don't have that here. And so the benefit that we get from people living in the city of Boston is that they're going to go buy coffee, they're going to go to Stop &amp; Shop or Star Market or Trader Joe's, wherever you are on your organic scale in terms of your food. They are going to also, in all honesty, they're going to participate in little league. They're going to go to the local YMCA, and they're going to be part of that neighborhood and community. And frankly, if they park a police car in front of the house, that's probably a good thing relative to your safety. If someone's a Public Works worker, making sure that that pothole gets fixed that much faster. All of those things are good, simple, quality-of-life things for the people of the city of Boston. We all get elected, not by anybody outside the city of Boston that we know of, but by people who live and work, who raise their kids, deal with the very sometimes urgent issues of the people right here in the city of Boston. We have the most, some of the most amazing people in the whole world who live right here. We should be able to draw from them. And also, we have a mayor who wants to build 53,000 units of housing, so there's going to be space for more people if they'd like to come. And so I think this is a timely and urgent issue. I think we should roll our sleeves up and get back to a day when all of the folks who work here actually live in the city. It's a great place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Counsel Baker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counsel Flaherty, and also Counsel Linehan for this. It's an important discussion that we have to have. I'm pro-residency myself. I appreciate the comments by Counsel Jackson. I think also wrapped into this conversation is going to be around housing. How do we provide housing to the actual city worker that's making $35,000, $38,000, $39,000? I think those people should be at the front of the line for our lotteries. I know my neighborhood is bursting at the seams with new projects here, and I'd like to see city workers at the front of the line. We have certain unions that offer grants for down payments. I think the city should get on board with that sort of thinking, and maybe those, maybe the talent that we talk about that's outside of the city, maybe we should be offering relocation, relocation costs, those sorts of things. I hope this commission really thinks about different strategies other than just mandating everybody move to the city. Help people move to the city, help the people that are making less money move to the city also. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Counsel McCarthy.
I rise to commend you and Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty said one word that continues to ring true in my head, and it's fairness. Last night, I was leaving a meeting at Mildred Ave, probably 9:40 at night, and one of the residents grabbed me and said, "You're crazy for taking this job. I don't know why you took the job." And I say a statement that I say all the time in public, and it's, "I read the brochure." And I think that a lot of the people that we're talking about here read the brochure, put the brochure away, and still moved away. And that's a problem. That's not fair. So it really comes down to fairness in this. I agree with Counsel Yancy. I think that in this commission, the council should have a voice. We should be a part of it. There were two daily papers today that wrote articles on residency. My phones were ringing off the hook already, making sure where I stood in this. I am a firm believer in residency. I believe it solidifies the neighborhood, and I'm looking forward to kicking this over to the mayor and seeing what comes up. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. So Counsel Flaherty moves that we suspend and pass docket 0135. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 0135 has been passed. Before we move on, I'd like to recognize a friend and colleague in the past here on the Boston City Council, Paul Scapicchio. Paul's here with us today. Thank you, Paul. You miss it? Very much so. Madam Clerk, personnel orders, please.
Docket number 0136, Counsel Linehan, for Counsel Murphy, offered the following order for the appointment.
Yeah. Counselor Murphy, you want to speak on the matter?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm recommending at this point in time that Taylor Maher be hired for the city council's central staff, technical assistant position. As you know, you yourself, as president, are attempting to and in the process of reorganizing the central staff of the city council. And this particular job would be an assistant to the program manager, Carrie Jordan, who we all know does an excellent job for us, but he, and roughly he alone, can, is skilled enough to manage the audiovisual equipment and manage the city council's communications station here. And in December of this year, Carrie, our programming manager, was confronted with whether or not he could use, he would use his vacation time or lose it, and he chose to use it, and then had to come back from vacation to operate the cameras because nobody else here was qualified. So we had 83 people apply for this technical assistance job. There was a staff of three led by central staff, which winnowed it down to three finalists. And as Chair of the Committee on Rules, I interviewed the three finalists. They were very close in all of their qualifications, except for one. One, Taylor Maher, works for the Suffolk County Sheriff, and she does his TV show and does his cameras and does all of the technical stuff that Carrie Jordan does for us here. So it was clear that if we were hiring a researcher, it might not have been a slam dunk for Taylor Maher, but in this particular case, for this particular job, Taylor Maher is the person, and I think we need to get Carrie some help as quickly as possible. So I'm recommending that the council move today to hire Taylor Maher as the technical assistant to the programming manager on central staff. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy moves suspension of the rules and passes of docket 0136. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0136 has passed. Madam Clerk, it's been brought to my attention that maybe, that docket 0134 may be better served in economic development. Counselor Lamartina has asked for reconsideration. Counselor Baker has no problem with that, so we need someone to request that reconsideration Right. Is there a second on that? Second? Any comments? Okay. So if there's no one, then docket 0134 will be assigned to the Committee on Economic Development, Labor and Planning. Planning and Labor, I'm sorry.
Planning and Labor, I'm sorry. Is that fine, Madam Clerk? Okay. We're moving right along here. Late files. I'm informed by the clerk that there is one late-file matter, which in absence of objection will be added to the agenda. Hearing and seeing no objections, the matter will be so added. The clerk will read the first, the only late-file matter.
January 7, 2015, Council Bill Lenihan for Counsel of Presley ordered that effective Saturday, December 27, 2014, the following named person be and hereby is appointed to the position set against.
Counselor Presley moves suspension of the rules and passage of the first late-file matter. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The first late-file matter has been passed. Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. No takers? That's good. There are four late-file matters, which in absence of objection will be added to the consent agenda. Seeing, hearing no objections, the matters are so added. The Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda is adopted. Are we missing anything, clerks? Not happened. I'd ask all guests and all members to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in the memory of the following individual. For the entire council, Dan Magoon, who is a firefighter here in Boston, and also he's the chairman of the Fallen Harrows Memorial, lost a newborn son, Gregory Michael Magoon, yesterday. So, for all the councilmen. For Counselor Baker, Dorothy, Dorothea Ellen Pembroke, Barbara J. Gendusso, Ann Murphy. For Counselor Siomo, Mary Deveris, Charlene Berio-Meek, John Nesdeskides. Close enough? For I and Counselor Flaherty, Janet Paterna and Marie Turner. For Counselor Lamatina, Carmela Bocino, Brenda Russo, Michael V. Anzini, Louis L. Marazini. For Counselor Murphy, Michael Lennon. Louise Hines. Thomas Curran. Andrew McFarland, Sr. James G. Home. For Counselor O'Malley also, Dorothy Pembroke. For Counselor Yancey, Governor Mario Cuomo. Sean M. Dyer. Michelle Gillard. Rena Jamison. Horace Warner, III. Dave D. Dubbs Walker. Sonia Yvette Hoopar. Stuart Scott. Officer Wenian Liu. Officer Rafael Romero. Charles Gunn. Richard Wicker. A moment of silence, please. Oh, absolutely. And on behalf of the entire council, the great senator from the state of Massachusetts, Edward Brooke. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The Chair moves that when council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, January 14, 2015, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The council is so adjourned.